So why don't we go ahead and get started? I will call the City Council Temple City Regular Meeting to Order. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17, 2020, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. And so with that, I will ask our city clerk for roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protamiu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. And as a reminder, for those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment, and when public comment is open during an agendaized item, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. Do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Okay, with that, I am pleased to introduce one of our regulars. It's good to see you again, Pastor Kelty.
You're welcome.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Hope it all is well with you and your family. You look great, so hopefully you're feeling well as well.
Today has gone well. I do apologize for missing the last meeting. For some reason, I couldn't get connected.
That's okay. That happens more than we know, doesn't it? Councilmember Sternquist filled in admirably for you, so.
No, no. She did much better job than I would.
All right. Well, thank you for coming. As we all know, Pastor Kelty is with the Community of Christ Church located at 9468 Broadway, Temple City, and Pastor Kelty, of course, will be providing her vacation. Did you want to say anything first about anything coming up, any news regarding your church?
No, with this COVID-19 going on, there's not much we're doing. In fact, there's nothing we're doing because we can't do anything. It's too noisy on our streets to beat outside, so we're just hanging in there. We have services through the Internet on Sundays, and that's about it.
Well, that's good enough for now. Okay, I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Our divine Creator, who is near and far from us, we thank you for this world that you have created. We thank you for this beautiful day that provides warmth and light for all that we are today. We thank thee that we're able to live in this community in order to enjoy its benefits and all that it has to offer to us. Just for this reason that we would come into your presence this evening to ask your blessing upon us, upon all who are about to be here indirectly or directly this evening. May this city council and their staff have your wisdom to be with them as they seek to do those things that would make this an even better community. We know not what the future may bring, but we would ask you, dear Creator, that in all we do, we may just that we do so with the future generations and for those who come after us, that we might look to the future with hope, anticipation, eagerness, and with a positive outlook, that those future generations will look back and say to each other with pride that we know that we did one very good job of preparing this community for that day and time. We thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Kelty, and our prayers are with you, and please stay safe and stay healthy until we see you again.
I look forward to it.
Thank you. If we could all please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Got the flag there in front of you? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move on to item number four. Excuse me, item number five ceremonial matters. There aren't none this evening. Now we will move on to item six, public comments on items that are not listed on the agenda. Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests?
No, Mayor.
And is there anyone online who would like to comment on items that are not on the agenda at this time?
I'm going to work on a mute. One second.
Okay, again, is there anyone on the line who wishes to make a public comment on any item not listed on the agenda at this time? Hearing none, they will close public comment. We will now move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. We have a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
One second.
Yeah, actually, I guess before we take that motion, I should check with the city clerk and ask if there are any email requests to speak regarding the consent calendar.
No, Mayor.
And is there anybody calling in who wishes to speak regarding the consent calendar? Hearing none?
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but can we pull the tree? What is that, item D?
Yes, item D is the adoption of the resolution approving the City of Temple City amended master tree list.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so there's been a request for the full item D on the consent calendar. So why don't we go ahead and take a new motion? Or we could just restate the motion who made that addition.
Oh.
I'll move the consent calendar and we'll pull item D.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Back in.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protamiu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, item D. Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, yes, I just wanted to share that this is really a great opportunity for our city to revisit some of the areas where we lost quite a few trees during the windstorm, and we weren't able to replace them where they had been before due to our tree ordinance, which I believe had been revised and didn't allow the same type of trees to, that were being replaced, to be in an area where the telephone lines and the power lines were very close, would be very, the trees would intrude on the lines eventually as they grew. So I think with the Parks and Recreation adoption of, or looking at different types of trees that hopefully we would adopt tonight, they picked a beautiful tree that's native to South America, but does very well and grows just about to the power lines, so they would be much easier to maintain, to keep them out of there. So I just wanted to share that I'm so pleased that we will be able to replant some of those trees that we lost during the windstorm. And I think that any tree that we can plant beautifies our city. So just wanted to shout out to the Parks and Rec Commission for recommending that tree also. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comment on that matter? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on item D.
Can I make a motion on it, even if I pulled it? Okay, I make a motion to approve?
Yeah. We have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second, unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, if we can have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protamiu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you. So we will now move on to item number eight. And that is a public hearing regarding an appeal of the Planning Commission decision approving a conditional use permit to modify a changeable copy sign at 5637 Santa Anita Avenue. So with that, I will turn it over to our Mr. Cook, our city manager, for opening.
This is the card.
You're breaking up quite a bit.
Is that a little? Is that better?
A little bit. Maybe if we all mute ourselves while he's talking, that might.
Is that better? Sorry. Is that better? Um, sorry about that. My typical technology issues here. Mayor, members of the council, the item before you tonight is a Planning Commission decision appeal regarding the changeable copy sign that what is known as the Blagio Car Wash at the corner of Las Tunas and Baldwin. With you tonight is the applicant, Alex Arash, and his brother, who will be, have requested to provide you with some information tonight. Ms. Hestie Lu, our associate planner, is here to present the staff information, and Mr. Reimers, our community development director, is here also. So with that, as a reminder, this is a public hearing. So we will start off with staff presentation, and then we will allow Mr. Arash to present any time and information he'd like to present to the council as well. So with that, I will start off with Ms. Lu.
Mr. Mayor? I think you're muted, Tom.
Yes, Fernando.
Um, I'd just like to make a disclaimer before we start that the city manager and I met with the applicant last week to discuss this matter.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else that met with the applicant?
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, William.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor Chavez, yesterday I had an opportunity to meet with the applicant, and city manager Brian Cook was attending as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, I met last week also with Arash and Brian Cook via Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those disclosures. So go ahead, we'll hear from Associate Planner Lu.
Yes, I'm ready. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, City Council. Honorable Mayor, I am going to start with Slide 2. So in front of you on the screen is a subject site. The subject site is a car wash business. On the side, there is a drive-through canopy and a building for the car wash. The monument sign is located at the northeast corner of the parking lot. As you can see, that's just on top of the image there. That's the subject monument sign for the discussion of tonight. The site is owned by neighborhood commercial and is surrounded by commercial developments, actually, in Acadia, on the west, on the north, and on the east. On the south is the Temple City High Density Multi-Family Residential Zone. Now we're looking at the slide four. Slide four shows three pictures of the neighboring businesses. Number one from the left is Starbucks, the business, just directly across the street from the business on Live Oak, and you can see the monument sign that the business constructed. Across the street diagonally from the business is Chevron. It also got a freestanding sign. And across the street from Santa Anita is the Thrifter Store. It also has a freestanding sign. Slide 5 shows a little history about the business. The car wash business and the building were constructed in 1992 along with its monument sign, and the original sign was at nine feet wide and 12 feet tall. In the year of 2011, Blagio Car Wash opened a business by taking over the existing car wash business. And the year after, in 2012, Blagio Car Wash came in and by first sign permit to install an electronic changeboard box with, on top of the sign within the existing sign frame. Realizing that the city is lack of regulations for changeable copy sign, the city amended its zoning code to require a conditional use permit for any new or existing change, new changeable copy sign or existing changeable copy sign if the sign is to be modified. On July 3, 2018, two years ago, the city noticed the changes to the height of the sign, among other changes like the new display board. The city issued, opened the case for the violation of a conditional use permit because Blagio Car Wash did not apply for a conditional use permit. So in January of 2019, the city received the application from the business owner of Blagio Car Wash, applying for the approval of a conditional use permit. On June 9 of 2020 this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the matter. The Planning Commission adopted a staff recommendation approving a conditional use permit with a condition that the project design has to be revised to meet the compatibility finding. So on June 22 of 2020, the applicant appealed. Now we're on to Slide 6. In order to approve a changeable copy sign, the city and staff has to make three findings, summarized as whether the project will have a detrimental effect, whether the project would become a driver's distraction, and whether the project design is compatible and be an enhancement to the site, for the site and for the surrounding. Slide 7 shows a comparison between the original condition and height for the sign and the modified condition and height for the sign. For remedy, the applicant proposes some changes to the existing conditions. One is to change the color from the reddish color, as shown on the right-hand side of Slide 7, to a nerst tone. Another is to add some raptor tails on the side and paint the top and bottom a burgundy color and add a planter around the base of the sign. For the three findings, finding one is really largely dependent on whether finding two and finding three can be made. So staff would like to start with finding two. This is Slide 9, just for the audience who's following.
Can you speak up a little louder? I'm having a little difficulty hearing you. Did we lose her? Reimers, are you taking over, or what are we doing?
Yeah, I can continue if Hestie can move the slides along. So in finding two, what we looked at were what would be required in order for us to go ahead and recommend approval of that finding. In order to recommend approval of that finding, they would need to limit the duration so that the sign is not changing too quickly, so there would need to be at least a minimum of eight seconds per slide. No special effects or animation that might distract the drivers would be allowed. And they would need to have a photo sensor that would adjust the brightness so that at night the sign is not too bright. And with those conditions in place, staff could recommend approval of finding number two. Hestie, can you move the next slide?
We, did we omit finding number one, or are we coming back to that?
Finding number one, staff can recommend approval of that it doesn't have a detrimental effect. So I think we skipped over finding one.
That wasn't a problem.
Yeah. Ah, perfect. Hestie, does your audio work?
Um, yeah, I do see the sign that the connection is slow, so I was wondering if my presentation is being heard?
Yeah, we can hear you now, and we're on Slide 11.
Okay, we're on Slide 11. I'm talking about, I just finished talking about existing sign, how staff cannot make finding three for the existing condition. So before the Planning Commission meeting and at the request of the applicant, the staff developed the alternative design for the applicant to consider. The alternative design with a position assigned diagonally facing the intersection, which would have improved visibility and would.
Let me stop.
So we get some background noise going on. If, just a reminder to everyone to mute your microphones so that we can hear the speaker. Thank you.
Okay, um, so the sign should be, as staff suggested, the sign should be a total of six feet tall with a display box at four feet and two feet for the base. The base should be wider than the display cabinet to imitate the elements usually used on Spanish architecture. And a pergola can be created around the sign to allow trained wine to grow onto it. In front of the sign, there should be a low-lying plants as landscaping. The six-foot sign would be compatible with a human scale, and it would provide horizontal massing rather than vertical. This slide, Slide 12, shows, although the relationship, Slide 12 shows the relationship of a sign should have with the architecture of the building, although the applicant has proposed raptor tails, which somehow reflects the elements on the building, but the alternative design proposed by staff would have a more closed relationship. As you can see, that the columns, fox columns on the building that frame the window would be a bring-over as a pergola around the sign. Planning Commission meeting considered a staff recommendation and the findings that can be made for the alternative design. And the Planning Commission approved the condition use permit with one particular condition that the applicant should revise the project design and bring it back for the city to approve based on the compatibility finding requirement. Slide 14, so staff, for this appeal, and tonight, staff continues to recommend that the city council consider the Planning Commission's decision and uphold the Planning Commission decision approving this condition use permit subject to all the conditions as recommended in the Planning Commission resolution. Approving the condition use permit based on the Planning Commission decision would means that the applicant has to bring back a design based on the design provided in the staff report as figures five and six demonstrated. And the applicant has to turn off the sign if the applicant is not able to acquire a building permit within the six miles starting today. If the city council finds that you cannot agree with the staff's recommendation, there are two alternatives. One is to deny the condition use permit, which means the applicant either have to remove the sign or bring it back to its original condition, meaning bring it down to 12 feet. Alternative two would be to approve the condition use permit based on what the applicant is proposing, as demonstrated in the previous slide. For this alternative, staff would take the city council's input and would have to bring back the resolution for the approval. With the conclusion of the presentation, staff is now ready to take your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we will begin with council questions. Councilmember Mann, do you have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mayor Chavez. My first question is, you mentioned that if the applicant brought the sign back to its original height, finding three would be resolved. Is that an accurate way of saying?
Uh, do you want me to answer the first question?
So if the applicant takes it back to the original design, then this case does not need to move forward. The issue, the code enforcement case, would be resolved, and then the applicant could just continue with the existing, with the sign as it existed two years ago.
Okay, so I guess following that line of reasoning, because in the staff report, the recommended design or the alternative design proposed by staff, I think the total height of the alternative design would actually be shorter than 12 feet, right? It would actually be smaller than the original sign itself.
Yes, that's correct. What we as staff struggled with was that there is a finding that sets a very high standard, that the sign has to enhance the site, which is why what we proposed based on the limited amount of space there and the other arguments that are listed in the staff report, that a sign of a lower height with more architectural features would be beneficial and would be necessary to meet that finding.
Okay, and finally, the finding number three, can you explain at least from, because I know the previous code that this application is based on is different than our current version of the code that was updated in 2019. Can you explain how finding three was arrived at? Is that a, is that something that our previous code actually called out and said that as part of the CUP process for a changeable sign, that finding three needed to be established? Or is that, I guess, more of a professional judgment call during the course of the CUP process?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that question. So what the code says was, as soon as a, is a electronic changeable copy sign is proposed, that application requires both a conditional use permit, but that condition use permit has to have additional findings beyond just the regular CUP findings. Our analysis in the staff report really focuses your attention on those additional findings for the changeable copy sign. The third finding, we focused a lot on because we thought that really set the highest standard. And that third finding says that in order to approve this project, the planning commissioner of the council has to determine that the proposed use, oh, sorry, that the proposed changeable copy sign is designed to be compatible with and enhance the existing property and the surrounding neighborhood through the size, shape, color, and/or materials of the sign. So that was the direction, those were the findings that that council adopted at the time, and so that's how we had to review the sign.
I see. So just to clarify, that verbatim. I see. So ju- just to clarify, that verbatim, what you just wrote was actually part of the, the ordinance before?
Yes.
I see. Okay. All right, um, that's, that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Scott, when or where do the, um, the new requirements of 2019, when, when those were adopted, where were those taken from? Were they looked at from, um, is it a county-wide place? Or where we go to look for those things? Or how, how, how do we come to a conclusion that this is, you know, something that we should adopt?
So just so everyone's aware, the, when this sign was modified and when the application was submitted, that was under the old code. And the old code had its own set of findings and requirements. A new code was adopted at the end of 2019 and became effective the first, or the January 3rd, 2020. In order to prepare that code, we hired a separate, a separate consultant who specialized in sign codes, who has experience statewide with coming up with sign code requirements. And so he pulls from a lot of different sources. I know Pasadena and Arcadia were specifically looked at beyond just what he normally looks at.
Okay, and then my second question is, when the consultant came to, you know, that conclusion that, you know, this would be the way to go for our city, were the other, I know Starbucks wasn't, right? But the other was Savers are sign already up and was the gas station sign the same as it currently is?
Yes, both the Savers sign and the Chevron sign look like they've been there for quite some time, at least more than the, the code was, has been adopted. Just to remind everyone as well, those sites are in a, in a different jurisdiction. Those are in Arcadia.
Right, but I, I guess my question is, is that when, one of the requirements is that it has to enhance the area around for consist, consistency, I would imagine, those four corners are very inconsistent if you look at the signs. So I'm just wondering, did the consultant look at the car wash sign in isolation because the other three signs were in Arcadia?
I, I apologize, Councilmember Sternquist. The finding that states that the site, that the changeable copy sign has to enhance the site, that was in the old code. So that was adopted, Hestie, do you remember what year that old code was adopted?
2013.
2013. So that, that I don't have as much knowledge about how those, that finding was developed and who wrote that finding.
Okay, um, no, that's okay. I mean, it's, it, when I looked at the signs and drove by, I mean, there's really no consistency. And, you know, I, I don't know how those three corners really enhance one another, to be honest with you. But I was just curious if the consultant might have just looked at Temple City because it's a different jurisdiction and didn't even include the signage around. Just, just a question that came to mind when looking at the signs when Hestie pulled them up. But that's it. Thank you.
Hey, before I go to, uh, Councilmember Viscar, I'm a, I'm a little confused by the, this last set of questions. What consultant are we talking about and when? I, I heard something about a consultant in 2019 for a change in 2020 and I couldn't find any such in my report. And last change I saw was 2013. So what are, what are we talking about here?
Yeah, I, I apologize for the confusion on the, the timeline. So in 2013, the city council adopted some new findings and some new regulations for electronic changeable copy signs.
And that's when the consultant was retained, correct?
No, sorry. The, then in 2019, when we did a comprehensive citywide zoning code ordinance, that's when we had a consultant come on board to help us with the sign code. And that, that code became effective January 3rd, 2020.
That code is not at issue in this manner, is it?
That's correct. It's not at issue.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Viscar, do you have any questions? You're muted. You're unmuted, Fernando.
There we go. Is it, I'm a little confused. Is the existing sign in conformance with what you're calling the old?
No, the, the sign as it exists today is not in conformance with the old code. And that's why we started a code enforcement case at the site.
Oh, I thought it was from a subsequent code.
The, the sign was modified in a way that did not conform with the code. So it, that's why we opened a code enforcement case and.
And, are you there?
Yeah, go ahead.
How, how much of an issue is the fact that the existing sign doesn't architecturally conform or, or duplicate what the other builders put on? Is that in, is that a important issue?
Yeah, it, it really, from, from our perspective, is the crux of the matter. The, without, the council would need to determine that the sign as proposed or the sign as it exists today is compatible with the existing architecture and enhances the site.
Enhances is pretty subjective, right?
Both are, both are subjective, yes.
Who are we looking at up there?
So, so here we have the original sign that was, um, that was constructed around, I think, 2009. And then this is the sign as it was modified. And the modified sign is the sign that does not comply with the code that was present at the time that it was modified.
So i- is the difference in height a major issue? Or is it, is it the look of the sign?
From our perspective, it's both. The, the height of the sign increases the scale dramatically to the point that staff doesn't believe it's compatible anymore and doesn't believe that a sign of that height enhances the site. And there's also the architectural issues with it making it compatible with the architecture on the site.
Does the Spanish design?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Bertam, you, any questions?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to be clear in my mind. The, um, the initial sign was put in back in 2012 and then we instituted a CUP for new signs. So the old sign would have been grandfathered in, right? Without a CUP?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes.
And then at some point before 2018, July 3rd, the applicant actually modified the sign, did, did, and without a CUP. Am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
And so we opened the case, a co-enforcement case against the, the sign or the applicant. And so the applicant came back early this year and presented a, a design, which is in figure three, that is what they're proposing. And that CUP request was denied by the planning commission?
No, technically, the, uh, what the planning commission did was they looked at the, um, the sign as proposed in figure three and said additional changes need to be made in order to make the finding. It was the commission's desire to approve something. So they approved the conditional use permit but required conditions of approval that would have made it look like the example that staff provided. So on slide 11 here, the sign would come down in height, its direction would be changed and a trellis would be provided to make it architecturally compatible.
Oh, I see, I see. So, so the CUP was actually granted but based on a design that staff came up with?
Yes, sir.
And then at the time, the applicant agreed?
Uh, I, I, that's probably a better question for the applicant.
But he's. So what I'm trying to, I'm trying to reconcile in my mind is that if a CUP was applied and, and was granted, it was granted based on the design that the, the applicant did not come up with.
That, that's correct. And it's assumed that's why the applicant's now appealing the approval.
I see, I see. So, yeah, I want to be clear in my mind what, what's going on. Okay. I've heard a comment, but I'll, I'll reserve it till later, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, can we go back to that photo in the staff report showing the other signs? Do we have that? So those are the three signs and the surrounding other corners. And the question I had, but I think it was answered by Director Ramers, was that each of those signs is in Arcadia, correct?
Yes, sir.
Or LA County, I don't know.
Yeah, our.
Arcadia. And, and we have no authority over any of those signs, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and of course, those issues aren't before us today. And there's no question that, uh, there is no uniformity of all those three signs. I think, uh, we don't need an expert to tell us that, that's for sure. So, wow, okay. Now, just so, um, just so I think, just to clear up a little bit of confusion during this report. So when we were speaking about a consultant in 2019, that had to do with just general changes to our zoning code. That wasn't to address this particular issue, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, um, that's it for my question. So why don't I go ahead and open up our public hearing? And I believe that, well, first of all, let me ask the city clerk if we have any emails regarding this matter.
No, Mayor, there are no emails.
Okay, all right. And so we'll take verbal comments at this point. And I believe as the, as the city manager indicated earlier, we have the appellant with us tonight, Mr. Arash. And so are you here with us, Mr. Arash?
There they are.
Yeah, there. Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'm sorry, am I pronouncing your name correctly? Is it Arash?
Yes, yes, honorable mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you to, uh, make your point, so go ahead.
Uh, Madam Clerk, may I please do this right on my desktop?
You're now the presenter.
Um, good evening, your honorable mayor. Good evening, council. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to present tonight a little bit about myself and, uh, my brother. We've been in the car wash business for 12 years. As a matter of fact, today is when my brother took me under his wing. So today's actually our 12-month, 12-year anniversary. With that being said, we are in the car wash business. We're not new to this. This is something we've done, have been doing. And this is, we bought this location back in December of 2010. In December of 2010, when we bought this car wash, the sign looked pretty much what you see on the screen. Does every, can everyone see my screen? Okay, great. So when I originally wanted to make a digital sign because it was hard to constantly change prices, run promotions, and so on and so forth, I thought a digital sign read, reader would make it a lot easier to drive in business and to do public announcements and do any changes as opposed to constantly calling a sign company and changing or changing prices. We display the weather, we display the time. So we decided to go in front of the city to actually request a digital sign reader on the existing monument sign that you see on the screen. At the current time, the city of Temple City was not equipped or did not have any zoning codes on digital sign readers. But however, I did have the experience of having digital sign because every location of our car washes do have digital signs and they're from the LA, from LA City, from Manhattan Beach to the city of Carson, to the city of Pasadena. So I have been adopted to many cities to be the first one to actually bring a digital sign reader into the city. I would like to first note, when I did bring it, I actually imposed clips and regulations and rules of the reader, what staff was mentioning. If you, on the bottom, it said, "General note, proposed actual sign will not display mention or any type of moving animation." The proposal of this sign is promote onsite businesses, meaning I can advertise for Coca-Cola. There will be a four-foot message allowed per day and display of eight seconds. So, meaning there's no animation. So all this I presented based off what the city of Los Angeles and I presented to the city of Temple City to say, "I'm gonna buy by this as well." So I wasn't trying to pull a new digital sign for the first time and cause animation like you would see on a Las Vegas-style strip or Sunset Strip. When I first presented this, the company SPSCO, which is out of Business Sounds, San Pedro Sign Company, they were coming to just carve out the top of this monument sign and drop in this new digital reader board. If you see all the dimensions, it says 9.5 existing overall sign length, 8.4 existing cabinet for electronic sign, active area. 95% of these measurements are based off this area that the digital sign reader was gonna go in place.
Mr. Arash, uh, Mr. Mr. Arash, let me, let me, uh, let me hold you right there. I'm, I think it's, it should be noted. So what time period are we talking about? Because if you're talking about 2012, when you applied for a sign permit to change a display to the reader, that's not at issue today.
Correct.
And so I, I'm not sure where you're at in the timeline. Where are you?
The, I'm, I'm presenting this in 2012.
Back in 2012?
Correct, honorable mayor. The reason being.
Okay, but 2012 is, is not an issue at this point.
Correct, honorable mayor. But the reason behind this is because when they came and measured this 12 feet of height, I've asked staff many times for the original permit of this monument sign. And I guess it's never been found from 1993 because during the planning commission, they never were able to produce it when I've asked for it many times. Because I strongly do feel, because as I'm gonna go through the rest of these clips, it's gonna show that I did not, based off my knowledge and my sign company's knowledge, the sign was not increased in height.
So in 2012, in 2012, what was the size of your sign? It's my understanding that it was nine by 12.
It was the same current height as it is now.
Nine by 12?
No.
It's a nine by 12?
Right now, the sign is about 15.
I'm, I'm saying in, I'm saying in 2012, it was nine by 12, correct?
It was not.
It wasn't. Okay, it was changed?
It, based, based off of the measurement that San Pedro Sign Company did, I believe, and after looking into it, because I can't reach out to them anymore, and I'm gonna show what the new sign company did in a matter of three clips. They measure from the top of the sign all the way to the bottom where the rocks were. When I went and excavated my sign, it looks like I flattened the grade and that made the sign look a lot taller, especially when the city of Arcadia may, came in and redid the sidewalks and created that center divider with the rocks. So that being said. So that being said, it looks like I went down about two feet below the sign, and that's what created the sign to give it the measurement of a higher height than what it currently was at 12 feet, because there was grass and shrubbery and a hilltop by the sign. And if I, you see, this is BK Signs showing what I did. This is the original, this is the original sign. That was all raggedy. The only thing that we added was about seven inches. So this was all that was added on the new design. When I first came to do this Santa with with BK Signs, this is my first email with them, showing that this is the first time I was ever doing business with this reputable company. They were asking for a deposit before they start, when the, before install, we need the rest of the payments. So I have never ever done business with them, so they're not a good friend of mine here trying to vouch for me on their behalf. And furthermore, when I asked them, "Do we need a permit to reface the sign?", they stated, "No, you don't." This was, this is Temple City's code in March of 2018. A monument sign of 20 feet was allowed without a digital board reader. So if I didn't have a digital board reader, over the counter, I could have applied for a sign permit up to 20 feet without an issue.
And did you?
No, there was, because I wasn't increasing the height.
Okay.
And this is, when, when after code enforcement came out, I, I went over to BK Signs, and I asked them, and I said, "Do you have any notes on this matter?" And I wrote, "Hi, Brian, not sure if you received my voicemail yet, but I called to ask you regarding my project in Temple City. The city is claiming the monument sign is not the same width and height as the old sign. Can you check your records and tell me what your notes you have in this project?" This is what he wrote back, "Alex, as we discussed before, the sign size was not altered. The sign remains the same size as in the same structure."
Okay, now, before you go, hold on, before you go any further, so I, I, so by, I guess your point is that that you disagree with staff's um statement that the the sign is actually four feet higher than the sign that was there when you applied for your permit in 2012?
It would be, it would, besides the seven inches, it would be about, it would be about three and a half feet, correct? That's what, that's what I'm disagreeing. I do agree that we added the seven
Okay, so you disagree with staff that the, that the sign is is four feet higher than the original one, is that correct?
Three and a half feet, because of seven inches, I do agree that I added that cap to the top.
Okay.
Um, I further, after this, I decided to spend $1,800 and go through a CUP to try to appease the city and try to give, I realized that the city, that staff was more concerned about the design element of the sign. So I decided to present this to further go back and spend money to make an earth tone and try to make it uniform with the, with what staff wanted to see by adding a planter box on the bottom, but staff was not having it. Staff actually wanted the sign to actually even be lowered to like six feet. So like what our director said, Scott, that if I were to bring it to a 12-foot height, there would have been no conversation, nothing would have happened. Staff wanted me to change the direction of the sign totally, which is a double side reader. That means one side of the reader would not be available to be used anymore, because it would be facing the parking lot and to even lower it worse. So I would be, I would be going into a worse situation than what it was originally. And based off me being a tax revenue provider for the city of Temple City and being here for many years, I've never, at every, every inch that I've done any improvement to the site, I've always went through the regulatory process, I pulled permits. I would be, I would be a complete idiot to decide to raise the sign and spend over $10,000 and expect the city not to realize it. And it would be very foolish of my sign company to put this in black and white writing in an email saying that, "Hi, we did not touch the size of the sign." What I want to bring to the attention is, but you guys have all seen the pictures tonight. It's all subjective in the picture. It does look like the sign is bigger, but it's all subjective how you take that picture. This is a picture I personally took from Sabers to show how big the sign is. And relatively to the Chevron, my sign is much smaller than conforming with the intersection itself. I I am surrounded by the city of Arcadia. And as I was going through the process, I want to point out, Your Honorable Mayor, a couple of times, as I was making arguments, it looks like staff has gone by and rectified those arguments. Like, in the staff report, which I highlighted in yellow, one of the things staff said is, "Therefore, this, the proposed sign will create additional traffic that can demonstrate that the site does not have sufficient access." But in the current staff report for tonight, the proposed, the proposed use will not generate additional traffic. Then in the next one, it said, "The proposed use is consistent with the land use designation of the property, and the site is non-residential use." On the planning commission's staff report, they said it would be detrimental to public health and safety. So it looks like, as I'm making arguments over this course of planning commission, it's looks like they've, they've loosened the chain a little bit on me in regards to saying before it was, it was, it would be detrimental. And if we go further down the staff report, the condition of approval improves the project to control the frequency of the messages allowed, the brightness and display during the time and date. I've already, when I originally did get this over the counter condition, I was able to even tell the, tell them that there would be no animation, it would be onsite marketing only, and the clips would be static, it would not be dynamic. So I've been, I've been very accommodating to staff, and the staff report has been changing from the original planning commission staff report, that they were saying that it would be detrimental, it would cause a queuing issue, it would cause a traffic. It's, the sign has been there for over 10 years, and I do strongly feel that the reason why we're here tonight is because when I did remove all the rocks and the shrubbery and the grass, it made the sign, when we measure it, taller from where it was. If I were to build a little hill around the sign tonight, if we were to, if I were to build a little hilltop around the sign, I would easily make up for that three feet. So I'm asking the city council to really appreciate the fact that I went through extreme hardship during this COVID time, that I'd have to shut down my business, I would have to spend thousands of dollars to go to, to a height that's not gonna make a difference. It's, it's the design, if, the design will still stay the same. In the worst situation, I'm obviously not gonna flip the sign and have it down to six feet. I would be forced to go down to 12 feet, and that alone would cost thousands of dollars. But the sign, design will still stay the same. And I strongly do feel that I am extremely compatible and I have the compatibility of the core intersection. I do strongly fit in with the Chevron, and I do fit in with the Sabers. And if I were to address this matter in 2018, when the code said I could have had up to 20 feet, I wouldn't have been here even tonight. It's the digital sign that's triggering all this dilemma. I appreciate your time, Your Honorable Mayor, thank you. I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Um.
Thank you for giving me over three minutes, by the way, I really appreciate it. I tried to go as fast as I can.
Not a problem, okay. Before we go to, uh, first of all, is there anybody else in the public who wishes to make any comments this time?
There are no public callers, Mayor, and there's no emails.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Before we go on to final council questions and comments, I would like to ask Mr. Reimers to perhaps respond to some of the things that Mr. Arash was, uh, just got through saying, particularly regarding the difference in, in heights between the originally built sign and the sign that is there now. Mr. Reimers, can you comment on any of these things?
Uh, yes, um, Hasty, could Hasty bring up the slide showing the two, um, the existing versus the proposed, uh, sorry, the existing versus the original monument sign? That would be helpful. Um. Hasty, can you show the slide that has the two monument signs, the original versus the existing?
Uh, I apologize, my, my scoring is now moving. I guess I, I mean.
Okay, well, before you even get to that, I think we all saw the picture. I believe the staff report indicates that the current sign is at least four feet higher uh than the original sign. Are you, do you stand by that?
Yes, sir, that's our belief. It looks to us like the, um, the, so when I, Mr. Um, Mr. Arash makes the point about the grading has changed um with, with rocks being moved or landscaping being changed. Um, if, if we don't look at the bottom of the sign and we just look at the arm of the vacuum, um, when we look at that, we can see that the sign has been increased in height um even in comparison to that um marker. Um, so it's our belief that the sign looks like it was raised in height about four feet.
Right, now, I, I will get to the other council members, but since I have a couple of questions, I might as well ask those now. Is the, if the sign, as the, as I guess the contractor stated in some emails, if the size had not been changed or maybe changed even the seven inches, um, wouldn't they have had to, under the new, under the ordinance that was in effect at the time, wouldn't they have had to still apply for a permit to raise it seven inches?
Um, uh, yes, technically, I mean, the non-conforming section of the code says that a non-conforming structure should not be altered in any way. Uh, so they would need to apply for a conditional use permit.
So, so for the consultant or his contractor to say that no permit was required, that's not entirely true, is it?
That's correct.
All right, um, let me go back to, uh, council for any questions or any final comments. Council, I'll start with Councilmember Mann.
Oh, yes, thank, thank you, Mayor Chavez. Um, so, Mr. Arash, thank you for, for sharing your perspective on this project. Um, I, I would like to ask you, um, is, is your, is your desire to more or less keep the sign as it is? Um, would, for example, if there was some sort of compromise where, say, the message board was switched off, or if the height was lowered by four feet, but everything else remained the same, that's really not something you're, you're looking for, right? You're, you're looking to retain your sign as it is?
Your Honorable, Your Honorable Councilman, absolutely. It would be a big financial burden on us, and I'm even willing to dedicate 20% of the digital sign to city announcements. I'm willing to even give part of my share of the sign with the city, and I will endure any cost for advertisement or marketing or any designs that necessary. The sign currently turns on at 6:30 AM and it shuts off at 10 PM. My sign doesn't run 24 hours.
Okay, and, um, thank you. And my, my second question is, you, you brought up a point earlier about how the city's ordinance at that time would have allowed you to build a freestanding sign up to 20 feet in height. Um, and that freestanding sign means that it wouldn't have a changeable message board.
Correct. So if, if I were to shut down the digital board and place a plexi, a plexi sign over it or like re, refaced it, where it says "Car Wash" right now, if I would have put my name over the digital sign, I would have been okay, correct?
Would you be willing to do that?
It would be a shame, because the digital sign is something that enhances my business and actually does that. But at this point, to be cost effective, I would either have to, I would have no choice but to do that. I mean, the digital sign, the, the reason what's triggering this is the electronic digital sign reader. It's not causing any, it's not causing, thank God, in, in matter of all these years, it's never caused any accidents. It's never been detrimental. I do static, um, I don't do any animation. It doesn't cause, the stills don't change until every 10 seconds, and when they do change, they change instantly. There's no transition, it doesn't glide, it doesn't slide, it doesn't showcase, like, it doesn't slide in. So there'll be, i- i- it's, it's me saying every six months, I'm gonna go up there and hire a sign company that's gonna charge me $1,000 to, to, to give different rates and like, I put up the weather, I put up the temperature, and I'm willing to do public announcements for the city as well. So I, I think it would be a great partnership, even for me to dedicate some time to you. But yes, I would have no choice to answer your question.
And, and thank you. And my, my last question is, um, you, you showed an email earlier that the company who did your new sign responded by saying they didn't change any of the dimensions. Um, and I'm assuming you, you bring up that point, because you're, you're standing by the fact that you believe the sign has not been changed, right?
Correct, and, and I do feel, where, where the city, when first, the code enforcement of, Your Honorable Mayor and the city council, I'd like to present this, is when the first city came out with this code enforcement, they kept, they were judging the height sign back to the first page that I presented tonight from San Pedro Sign Company, which showed all the dimensions. And I strongly do feel that the dimension of 12 feet, it was up to the rocks. They didn't care about how tall the feet was. They just wanted, they wanted to come in and carve the top out and put in the digital sign reader inside. So they didn't care how, how, how high the sign was. So I strongly feel that even if you look at what's on our sign, what's currently on the screen, if you look at to the left, you could see more of the base of the sign compared to the right. Below the word "car," to the grass length is much long, much taller than where the "H" is compared to where the grass is. So when the rocks were there, I had a feeling he measured roughly, okay, it's 12 feet, it is what it is, doesn't pertain to us. We're just installing the digital reader on the top.
Okay, so, um, and my last question for you is, um, be, because I think the facts are, at least in, in what I understand from what's being presented, it's really clear that the sign, when, when you built a new one, that triggered the CUP process. But if I understand you correctly, it seems like the company that you hired either didn't know that that would trigger the CUP process or they thought that what they were doing was in conformance with the city's code at that time.
Correct, that's why I made him send me an email, which I showed. I'm like, well, do we have to pull a permit for this? He said, "No, up until 20-foot monument sign, we're just refacing it and painting it. It doesn't require"
Right, but it's not doing that, though. You're, you're changing it to, I, I mean, you're, you're mod, you're modifying, it's, it's a, it's a new sign. Like, that's, that's not the same sign, though. So you, you worked with a CUP process, right?
When I hired him, it was just to reface the sign and paint it and add the decorative molding to the top. So the seven inches on top now, yes, I would see what triggered. But if I take off that seven inches, which brings it, which then the height of the sign would be 15 and a half feet, then I, I didn't assume that, but also I would have definitely came in for a CUP process. I would be a fool not to do that.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that the, the entire frame of the sign, you're saying, is the same as the old one, the original sign? They just touched
They, they refaced it, correct.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions.
That in writing, I went back to him, because I, that's one of the first things I asked him. I said, "That's why I made him send it to me in writing." I said, "Do we have to pull a permit for this?" He goes, "No, we're just refacing the sign." Every, everything that I've ever done on my site, I've always pulled a permit, and I've always done it according to regulatory standards. So I would, I would have done that in 2018, when I was refacing the sign.
All right, thank, thank you, Mayor Chavez, that's, that's all I have.
And so, so, Mr. Arash, we have on our screen two signs. Can you see those two signs right now?
Correct.
And are you trying to tell me that the sign on the left is the same size as the sign on the right?
Based off my knowledge and based off
No, not based, not based on your knowledge, just look at that and tell me, are those signs the same size? Is that what you're saying?
Your Honorable Mayor, according to this picture, it doesn't look like it's the same size. I do feel that the way they took the picture and the angle, it makes it look larger, just like on a, on a movie set, when an actor looks bigger, based off the angle of the camera. When I took a picture of the Sabers, when I was presenting earlier tonight, you could see the sign looks a lot larger than the one it actually is. So I do think
So are then you saying then So are, so are then you saying then that staff is intentionally trying to make these signs look different than what they actually are? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
No, not at all, not at all.
Well, it has to be one or the other. It has to be one or the other. Either they're not the same size. You just got through saying that in your, in your view, that the way the picture's taken, it makes it look like it's bigger when in reality it isn't. So is that what you're saying?
I, in, in essence, in, in some sort of manner, yes. I don't feel like they purposely did. I feel like they just came in, they snapped the picture close up. It wasn't like it was, okay, the same height, the same way that, I do feel the picture on the left where staff received that picture, that is, that was pulled from Google Earth of those Google cars that drive around. And the one on the right, it was probably pulled by a staff member standing on the sidewalk and taking a picture.
Mr. Remers, when, where were these pictures taken and how?
Yes, uh, both images were taken from Google Maps. Um, so in order to deal with the issue the opponent is making, um, you have to look at how close the photo is, um, how close the object is to the person taking the photo. One way of determining whether the same scale is used is to simply put a piece of paper up to the vacuum on your screen and measure the height of the vacuum on the left. And they do the same with the vacuum on the right. And you will find that both vacuums are about the same height within a few centimeters, a few millimeters difference. So the scale is the same of the vacuum. So as long as the scale of the vacuum didn't change, we know that the sign did change.
Thank you. Okay, um, council member Viscara, any questions or comments? You're on mute, Fernando.
Yeah. There. As, as, as you were talking about the signs, I, I was looking at what Mr. Remers was talking about and uh making the comparison. And, and to me, it's obvious that, that Birm did not allow for that much of a difference. But, but the vacuum machines are, are, are good reference points, and it does show that the sign is considerably taller. Now, I, I know that Mr. Arash has a sizable investment in this sign, and I think making any changes to it would be a, would be a hit, right, Mr. Arash?
It, it would be, it would be a significant hit. It would be at least in the upwards of fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. It would be, a- as it is right now, we're struggling because of COVID, and now the city's making announcements about.
I asked a simple question. I don't need a lot.
Um, yes, I, I'm just stressed out. I apologize. It would be a very big hit.
We'll be here all night if we keep this up.
I apologize. Sorry.
That's all right. So, so I, I'm convinced that this sign, and, and I've been involved in a lot of building projects. I, I, I think I know what I'm looking at, that Birm is probably a foot and a half at the most tall. So it's not gonna make that big a difference, the one on the left. Um, so I'm wondering, and I guess I'm looking for a way to make everybody happy, um, how much of a hit would it be to change the, 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 um, I guess that, not, not so much architecturally, but, but uh, the paint job on, on this sign so that it would blend with the rest of the buildings on your property?
It, it wouldn't be as significant as touching the height or the dimension of the sign. It would, I, it would, I, I think when I, when I was talking to BK Signs and presenting the brown earth tone that I was presenting to staff at the time, at the time, it was about close to seventy-five hundred, because this sign is not paintable, it's sheet metal. You would have to remove, all, reface it again and paint and put new sheet metal up.
So that would be the alternative?
Correct. Or I can remove the cap, which is about seven inches, and it'll make the sign a total of fifteen and a half, depending on where we measure from grade. And I'm willing to dedicate some time and put some shrubbery and put some flowers around it, whatever.
You already said that. I heard it before. Um, but thank you.
No, I'm saying, I would, I would also add some plants and trees around it as well.
That might be more of a traffic nuisance or hazard. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure you'd wanna do that. But sorry, are, are you saying that, that moving that cap you have on the sign and, and redoing the color of the sign is something that, that's viable for you?
It, it, it's, it's better than having to touch the dimension of the structure of the sign, absolutely.
I'm sure you have a lot of underground electrical there.
Yes.
Not a lot, but you have some. Sure, there's conduit running back to someplace. Um, okay, as you can tell, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling trying to find an accommodation here. So I just thought I would throw that out as perhaps one idea. Uh, beyond that, the, the, the only alternative that you have is a total reconstruction, isn't it?
Correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Portabue, any questions or comments? You're on mute, Vince. I need to get one of those signs, like, like Cindy, where's that, where's that, Cindy, where's our cup that we could put that you're on mute?
Well, somebody muted me, not me. I didn't mute myself when I think Mr. Arash.
There you go.
Part of, somebody muted uh everybody, so.
All right.
Uh, and I got muted.
No problem. Go ahead. We can hear you.
So, um, I am convinced, though, I mean, look at the two pictures in front of us, uh, showing the original sign and the modified sign, that, um, you know, the, I think it was, uh, you perhaps, Mr. Mayor, who brought up the height of the vacuum. Um, and you can see that they, it, the, the individual sign, the top of the vacuum line, that would be with the elec, the, the electric sign board in, in the, in the modified design, it does, it does not, it's actually lower than it. So I'm pretty much convinced that uh the sign has been raised personally. However, um, I am not really bothered by the height of the sign myself. I think this is a very interesting corner where, where um three sides of it is outside Temple City, and apparently, with the exception of the um Starbucks sign, um, the other two monument signs are way bigger. Um, and this is really what we call the strip in, in urban design, where, where the buildings are all set back from the corner. We have nothing but um, um, road signs and um, electrical signs, uh panels, boxes, um, traffic signals, that sort of thing. There really is no, not much of an architecture at the corner there. So it really doesn't not take a whole lot of, for me, to make a finding for that there's really, I mean, the current sign as it is, even though I wish they would have come in for a CUP at the right time, that it really is not to, you know, there's really not a whole lot of compatibility at that corner. I think um, Mr. Um, uh, Councilmember Viscar brought up, there was really not much there, or Mr. Mayor, you have brought it up. In this particular corner, we have no really distinctive architectural style. So I do not find it problematic to make the finding that, you know, pretty much anything, if it's not outrageous, is going to be compatible with that corner. And I also want to mention something else, too. Um, I could see why the previous owner or Mr. Raj might have wanted the sign to be at the current height, because if you drive by the current site right now, the vacuum tubes basically block the sign. And also, he has the unfortunate part of having two large traffic signs in front of him, and also very large sign, um, electric box. I mean, it doesn't show up in the, in, in, in the pictures right now, but you can kind of see it in the original sign to see that on the right hand side, there's a little white box. That box is rather large, it's probably, what, five, six feet, feet wide? So anything lower, you actually, the sign is really, really hard to read. So while I'm convinced the sign is actually had been increased in height, personally, I do not find, I can make finding number three myself. So that's, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I didn't forget that Councilmember Sternquist, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments or questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. I had the ability to meet um through Zoom with um Arash and Mr. Cook, and so I think all my questions were pretty much answered then. Um, you know.
Was, let me ask you this. Was there anything that you learned during that meeting that is relevant to what we're doing today, or we all heard the same thing?
I would say that it's very similar. I think Arash did a good job of summarizing it in a short period of time. I think I was able to ask them some specific questions that maybe, you know, haven't been brought up, but they were, um, you know, I, I, I can share those. I think, um.
Well, I just wonder if it's relevant to our decision tonight. It may be help, it may be helpful. I don't know. But if, if that's the case, don't worry. I mean, it.
No, no, I, I don't think there, there was anything that maybe you did not hear that, that would change one of our opinions. I, I, I really struggle with the idea that, you know, I, I wish I had that answer, which is, I think a consultant that came in that was hired probably looked at that sign in isolation and said, okay, this is what we'd like to see in Temple City. I don't think he took into consideration, because it doesn't take brain surgery, and I'm not a consultant with signage, but to look and see that there's no consistency there. And actually, in my viewpoint, when I went out there, it kind of seems like the sign, Arash's sign, the way it is now, it almost goes from the shortest sign, which is Starbucks, to Arash's, which is higher, and then you go to a, a higher one with Sabres, and then I think the mobile one is even higher. So it kind of looks like that's more of a consistency than looking at them in isolation. So I, I think, I don't know, but I think maybe that's what happened with that corner is they didn't maybe consider Arcadia. Um, I think if we're concerned about the sign looking too high, the perspective from it, there could be um shrubbery planted, like lavender plants would grow perfectly, they're drought tolerant, on that bottom, which would um rise up and actually look like the sign wasn't as large. I do think that the cap could be removed if, if council felt that, how many inches is the cap, Arash?
Seven inches.
Seven inches isn't that significant. So I don't know if it's worth saying move the cap. I do have a suggestion, though, that I think, um, you know, I think it's the polka dots on the sign that make it not blend in, to be honest, with the rest of your building. I mean.
I don't think, I don't think those are polka dots. Those are, aren't those bubbles?
Oh, is it a bubble? Oh, I'm sorry. I hope I didn't offend you, but I thought they were big, large polka dots. Anyway.
How many councilmen have been through our wash, out of curiosity?
I'm sorry?
How many councilmen have been through our wash?
Oh, I've been through it.
Your Honorable Mayor, have you?
Okay. Do you wanna finish your points, or are you done?
No, I'm not finished.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I mean, it, i- if those are bubbles and that's the actual sign, that, then I don't think you could change it. But if there was a concern that it doesn't blend in with the rest of the building, I mean, there are like bumper sticker things you could put on top of those bubbles to make them blend in more. I don't know. But, um, I really have a hard time thinking that, you know, we're, we could be worried about enhancing the surrounding area because it's just so inconsistent as it is. And actually, I think there's some, if, if you look at it from another standpoint, there's beauty and diversity, you know? So I don't know. But I, I think that with COVID and a lot of people not being able to go, wanna go to have their car, their car washed for, I mean, I haven't taken my car to the car wash in eight months, I think. And now it probably needs to go. I've washed it myself here at home. But I think that reasonably, I could find reason to just leave the sign the way it is with Arash putting such around it to make the sign maybe not look so tall. Um, I think there's just too many things that, you know, I, I wanna be business friendly also, and I know we've done that with our restaurants, and this is very unique times, and sometimes unique times call for, you, you know, unique compromises. So, um, I would be in favor of having Arash leave the sign as is. That's it.
Including the bubbles?
And leaving the polka dots, I guess.
Bubbles.
I think it's my turn.
I'm more literal. I need to see the word bubbles.
All right. We all finished there? Thank you.
I, I.
Vince, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just do want to add a question to Mr. Arash. Uh, Mr. Arash, your proposed sign design calls for repainting of the, of the current sign, right? I, but I thought that you said it cannot be repainted.
This, this was at the time when I was going for a conditional use permit, and I wanted to appease the city, and this was back about a year and a half ago or somewhere around that timeframe. And financially, we were not in distress, and I was willing to appease the city and try to meet them halfway and make it fit more into what they wanted. So I was proposing this, then having it, have, having it touch the structure and the steel frame of the sign itself.
In other words, you'd rather not repaint it, because that will involve the placement of your panels?
Correct. Or if the city, if, if I have to, the city will give me at least time to recuperate from this financial distress to get to it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Um, Mr. Arash, I, I have a little hard time with you using the, you've used the word appease the city a number of times, and I have a hard time with that because, um, we're not looking for you to appease the city, we're looking to follow the rules of the city like we expect everyone else to follow. Um, and so I, 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 I'm not, I, I, I have to say that for staff's purposes, because all staff is doing is following the laws and the rules that we have in place. And, um, so be that as it may, a couple of things, um, you know, I think, uh, you probably know that I'm an attorney, and if I were the judge in this case, I would tell you and the city to go into this room and don't come out until you have a settlement, because that's what should be happening here. You guys should be resolving this between the two of you, instead of waste, not really wasting our time, but we have just spent an hour, really, and I am in no, I'm in no, I'm more confused now than I was when we first started, okay? And so, and that's not your fault, it's not staff's fault, but my God, this is a sign we're talking about, you know? And, uh, you know, there, there's gotta be a, a place for somebody to, to just reach a resolution. Uh. Go ahead. No, that's all right. No, let me, let me finish, let me finish, and then if you have something to say. And I know that you have tried with the city, you've talked back and forth, and I know that those things have, have gone on, but obviously they didn't work. So, um, real quick question for the city, and I don't know, Brian, if you can answer this. I, I should have probably asked before, but I just thought about it. And it, and one of the reasons I thought about it was that there's a question regarding disturbance in the area, things like that. Are, are we aware of any major accidents in this particular location, particularly related to this sign? particularly related to this sign or the, the distraction of this sign?
There is no, uh, traffic study or anything that would indicate, um, causation related to this or any other sign or structure in around the intersection.
All right, thank you. You know, I tend to agree with my colleagues that this particular intersection, I mean, if anything, it has no, no conformity, no uniformity, no nothing, it's a hodgepodge. I mean, if you recall, before that Starbucks was there, um, there was a vacant lot or vacant buildings there, it was a, an eyesore, and of course, that's been cleaned up a little bit. All the signs on all four corners are all different, all different. Of course, that's not anything we can control, since three of those are in Arcadia. The only one we can control is the, is the car wash one. I think you need to choose your consultants and your contractors a little bit better. I don't think they did you any service by what they told you in this matter that you could or could not do. Uh, certainly, had they checked with the city when you applied for this, for, uh, or when you wanted to make this change, um, there's no question that the city would have told you what you can or cannot do. For your contractor now to come back and say that that wasn't required is simply incorrect. And, uh, you know, maybe, uh, you, uh, you know, might want to look at that maybe a little bit closer as well. Thing that I had written down, I'm just looking at my notes, so bear with me here. Um, oh, so I know, you know, there's been some statements about the COVID and the, and, and everything that's going on. Uh, you know, as, as bad as that is, and I understand that, that there are businesses in the city that have suffered, there's no question about that. I'm not sure we blame COVID on this one. This, this thing started before COVID was around. Uh, this case was open back in, in July of 2018, so I don't think we can really blame this on COVID. Um, yeah, you have, obviously, I'm, it sounds like you've, you've suffered economically like other businesses have. Um, have you applied for any, uh, benefits of economic, uh, help, uh, for your business, uh, through all of this at all?
I have, but we were not able to obtain it.
Okay, so you didn't get anything?
No.
Okay, all right, well, sorry about that. Okay, um.
Your Honorable Mayor, I, I apologize for saying appease. I meant to say work hand to hand with the city, because it was all about the design. And I don't know if the city at the time, they didn't have a design review, review board that would give you more clear direction of how the sign should look. So that's what I meant, and, and quite the controversy. Quite the contrary, I actually did want to work in presenting something that they would be accommodating, but they wanted me to lower the sign and totally move it a ninety degrees opposite way.
Well, those are the recommendations, and, and you have to understand that what we're looking at here, and this is nothing new, that, that has been come, come to council. You know, planning commission, staff, they need to follow the rules. They don't have the luxury, I guess you could say, that council has of making discretionary decisions, okay, when they come before us, uh, like we do. And so, you know, they, they are doing their job. Um, too many times, it seems that, that we have been asked for uh, forgiveness rather than for permission. And, and that really, this is another case of that. Rather than getting the permission, uh, whoever was supposed to do that, whether it was you or your contractor or anybody, uh, the rules were in place, they were there for a reason, and they were not followed. I think that is very clear from the record. Now, of course, we are left now with, well, what do we do with this? Uh, I have to agree with my council members, and if I'm hearing them correctly, I mean, you know, if you look at those four corners, there's nothing about this sign that's extraordinary, that offends me in any way, that I think is going to cause any big problem down the road. Uh, I mean, I can't believe that we've even been talking about this for an hour and a half, to be honest with you, but here we are. So, um, you know, you know, I, I think, you know, I would hope, and I, I don't know if it's too late for that, but, but it sounds to me like some of the conditions that the planning commission put in place were not bad recommendations, and it sounds like, no, some of those, it sounds like you were ready to, to do, especially as, as Councilmember Viscara pointed, was trying to point out earlier about the painting and things like that, kind of, kind of low hanging fruit type of things. To me, it seemed like the big issue here tonight was the height of this, of this sign. Okay, and that's what was getting everybody in an uproar, and that's what was going to cause all the expense. If we, if you have to lower this sign, we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars, obviously. We're, you know, painting it or putting shrubbery around it, as Councilmember Sternquist pointed out, you know, would certainly add to the, you know, what, what the look of it perhaps. And apparently, it's not a, it's not a safety issue, it doesn't appear to be either, so. All right, um, well, I'm getting off my soapbox here. Um, and I know that, uh, we got kind of long, and we're probably going to need a break. Is there anybody else that has any quick comments or quick questions at this point? Okay, hearing silence. Oh, Miss.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Um, sounds to me like, um, there may have been, um, at least from all the council members' comments, there may be some, a support to keep the sign in place. So my question, Mr. Mayor, is that, um, what would that be i- if a motion were to do that, how, in what form that would take? Because the CEO of Condition Use Permit was approved based on the design that the applicant did not, uh, agree with. Um, and he is now appealing it, uh, that, that, so, um, I, I, I wonder what form the motion would take if we were to keep the current design.
Well, that would be one of the options, I believe, and Mr. City, uh, City Attorney may be of some help. But my understanding, uh, that if the city were to simply approve the application as proposed, when I believe the application is to keep the existing sign, staff would have to go, would need to receive feedback from us, and I don't know what type of feedback they want, but, and then come back at a follow-up meeting relating to the, whatever issues are stated in, in findings two and three. So, I don't know, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Right, so the, the motion would actually be to overturn the planning commission's decision, and as you put it, sir, to, um, approve the application as submitted. And then if there are conditions that the council wishes to impose, like changing the color scheme, um, say that you would be approving with the changed color scheme, and then give direction to staff to return with a resolution that memorializes your decision tonight.
Okay, and, uh, and I believe we have in our report a list of some of those conditions. Um, in the planning commission, uh, report, I'm trying to find it here real quick. Uh, it's, uh, conditions of approval, page twenty-seven of the report talks about different conditions of, of approval. Uh, I don't want to put any words into my colleagues' mouths, but I agree with you, Mayor Protem, that it seems to be the lean of the council at this point to allow the sign to, to stay. However, with still some conditions, I believe, that may not, um, be as onerous or as, uh, difficult for the applicant to meet. Is that, is that kind of what you're telling us? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, and I'm looking right at the conditions. It really looks like the changes would be to condition number one. Um, as you say, on, on that page twenty-seven, which is the design of the project. And so you would, you would direct staff to make any changes to condition number one, to be consistent with whatever motion is made, uh, and then to return it to you for a final approval, which would really just go on the consent calendar.
Okay, why don't we do this, and I know that, uh, we've been going on for a while. Um, and it may give us a little bit of time for all the council members to maybe review these conditions of approval. Maybe before we take a motion on this, we can discuss that a little bit further, and maybe even give the applicant the opportunity to respond. So we don't have to keep coming back and forth on this, I think we can get it resolved. But why don't we take a short ten-minute break right now? Uh, I've got nine-ten, why don't we go ahead and take over at nine-twenty? And in the meantime, uh, we can take a look at those things, and we'll come back and finish off this discussion. So let's take a ten-minute break, and, uh, and we'll be back.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that, uh, I think we all needed a little bit of a break. So when we last, uh, when we left, uh, we were, we were in kind of open discussion and, uh, really in the position to entertain a motion. Uh, Mayor Protem, you asked a question regarding, in the event, uh, or, or at least the nature of the motion, and a couple of questions for our city attorney, who kind of clarified, uh, what, if anything, we could do. Um, uh, during the interim, uh, I know that, uh, originally, there were some conditions of approval that were attached to this specific project. You know, and in looking at the conditions of approval, it appeared to me that most of these conditions, at least have either been done or agreed to by the applicant based on his representations this evening. I, I could be wrong, but I heard him, I heard him kind of, uh, go over these, I think, individually, uh, when he first started talking, and especially the ones regarding the changing of the sign and when it should be on or off, no, no, uh, animation, things like that, that don't seem to be a problem. Um, I do have a question regarding the general conditions. Is that, is that something that we just, as a matter of course, put in whenever we, on all CUPs, or is that, uh, how does that, where, how does that play into this whole thing?
Yes, sir, those are our standard conditions that are applied to any type of application.
Okay, all right. And so really, the ones that we're looking at, but I didn't see anything in here. And, and I know, well, let me ask you this. In the application that was presented, uh, we have a, a different color of, of sign. And I think that's what Mayor Protem Yu was asking about, and, uh, and is that, is that a condition? Or is that, is that the, or are we approving that particular design and color?
If, if you want, if it's the council's desire to approve what the applicant originally submitted, then you would want to change condition of approval number one to read that the project design shall be, um, shall be, shall match that shown in figure three. Um, if you want to approve what's, um, what's there presently, then, um, you would just change, uh, condition of approval one to say the project design um, is approved as, as it exists. Um, and then you could make any additional modifications, if you wanted additional landscaping, or if you wanted to change the color.
Well, I personally like the idea of the change of the color, as well as the additional landscaping. I think those are all good improvements, and, and I don't think any of those are necessarily going to break the bank necessarily. Certainly a lot less costly than simply taking down the existing sign and putting a new one up. Um, I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but, uh, that could be a potential option, so. Um, all right, well, is anybody here, does anybody want to take a stab at, at a motion? That, uh, I mean, we have nothing to rule upon at this time until we have a motion. I think we've taken enough testimony today and heard from everyone. Um, and so I'm ready to entertain a motion. Uh, Greg, did you have something that you want to add to that?
Just getting ready, ready to listen.
Getting ready to pounce on that motion, huh, okay. Uh, Mayor Protem, did you want to take a stab at the motion?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll try to take that at it. Uh, I move that we approve the appeal and direct staff to work with the applicant on project-specific conditions that reflected what we discussed tonight, including additional landscaping and, um, and possibly a, a, a color that reflects what's in figure, uh, three of the planning commission staff report.
And I think, Mr. Murphy, you had indicated, uh, that that motion probably should include also uh, overturning the planning commission's, uh, denial, is that, is that correct?
Yes, I, I, actually, I think the Mayor Protem did it just fine. He said, uh, which is fine. Um, and then directed staff to work with the applicant on changing conditions. Um, and obviously, that will be brought back for you to adopt by resolution. If staff and the applicant can't agree, then staff can bring that back to you, that fact back to you. But as long as they can reach agreement, then a resolution will come back that reflects the Mayor Protem's motion.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarify?
Uh, let, let William go. William, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, does, does that motion include the findings or the conditions related to the finding two about the, um, the changeable message, uh, animation and so on?
Yes, I, I, to the extent that the Mayor Protem focused on what, uh, the council had, had discussed tonight, there wasn't a lot of discussion about, uh, changes to the, the changeable board. So it sounds to me that the changeable board will remain, and that, uh, landscaping and color will be, will be modified based on, on that motion.
Councilmember Sternquist, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can be a little bit more specific for the applicant in regards to what we mean about the color, are, because.
I'm led to believe that, that this is not over with. We're simply, uh, basically asking the applicant and, uh, and our staff to go back, uh, and, and listen to what we said tonight. And this will again be brought back to us again, I believe, for final resolution. After they've discussed those specific issues concerning things like color, uh, you know, changeable things, what can be changed, what can't, censors, all that kind of stuff is all inclusive.
No, I understand that, but I, I'm just wondering, because you did mention that if they don't come to some resolution, then we're going to be back at this spot where we're going to be telling them what, giving direction as to what we mean by color. Do we mean he should work on repainting it? Or should he try and make some accommodations to maybe make the bubbles less colorful?
Or go away?
Or go away. So I think that if we can come to some idea to give him some direction, he knows at least what he's going to start with. Because if he goes back to staff and staff says, well, no, we think you need to paint it, he doesn't want to paint the whole sign because of cost, we're going to be back deciding what we mean about the color.
I would hope after tonight's meeting and spending the last two hours on this, um, people will be a little bit more receptive to, uh, to, to coming to an agreement after listening to our, what we've said, and, uh, take that to heart, I suppose.
Yeah, I would just hate to see him.
I have faith that Mr. Arash and, uh, and his brother can, uh, work with staff and, uh, and certainly have heard us tonight and then how we feel, and, uh, and calmer heads will prevail perhaps, so.
Just make all those, uh, bubbles white.
Mr. Mayor, can we just get a little bit of direct?
Mr. Mayor, can we just get a little bit of direction that it's, it's the, the height and the structure is not going to be something that we have to work on, it's more of the color and planting?
We're not changing the height at all at this point.
Right. The vice, the vice mayor has taught, the vice mayor has specifically mentioned landscape and color and to work with staff on that. So, Ms. Mayor, you do have a motion pending.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Unless there's any objection, I'll ask the city clerk for a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Riscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for attending this evening.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Best of luck to you in the future and stay safe, stay healthy out there. Okay.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, councilman, for your time. I really appreciate for your all help. Really, it's really helped us and we are, we are looking forward to work with your city and I really appreciate for your decision tonight. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, so much.
Have a good evening. Okay. All right, we will now move on to item number nine, unfinished business, there is none. And item number 10, new business adoption of resolution number 20-5503, making an appointment to the Board of Trustees for the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. Councilmember Sternquist, what? I thought you were like a lifetime member on this thing, aren't you? You're, you're on mute, but, well, we're on mute. Let's get to the, let's get to the report first and then we'll take care of business. All right. So, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor Chavez, I think you said it all. Mayor Chavez, this is my annual every two years appointment to the Vector Control. You've heard our last meeting, we talked about the swimming pool ordinance, so no need to go over about the district or what it does. It's an important entity that we have, it's important that we have representation on that, on that entity. So, Councilmember Sternquist is the incumbent. The council can elect whoever would like to be, continue to serve on that board.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any council questions?
Does that still start at seven in the morning?
6:30.
Oh, God. That's inhuman.
You have to get up at 6:30 to get dressed for the seven o'clock meeting.
That is pretty early. Okay, if there are no council questions, I'm going to open up public comment. So, Miss, Madam City Clerk, are there any public comment emails on this matter?
No, Mayor, there are no public comment emails.
And do we have anybody online that would wish to comment on this matter?
Mayor, there are no public callers.
Okay, thank you. So I'll close public comment. Any final comments or questions by councilmembers? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to appoint a representative to serve on the San Gabriel Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District Board.
Mayor Chavez, I'll move to appoint Councilmember Sternquist to the Vector Control Board.
Okay, thank you. We have a second?
A second. I also want to take this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to thank Councilmember Sternquist for serving on that board for so long.
Yes, I know. She, she is the mosquito expert. So, all right, thank you for that. We have a motion and a second. Without any objection, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Riscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes, and I just want to make sure I'm not in trouble with our city attorney. I know, I noticed in the report, it says that we have to adopt a resolution and strike the city clerk to complete that resolution. Do we need to amend the motion to include that or are we all?
I think we're okay for this evening, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item number B, consideration of a resolution temporarily deferring business license fees and penalties due to the impacts of COVID-19 and an ordinance amending section 5-2A-0 of the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining business by vehicle. City Manager? You're on mute.
There we go. Boy, a rough day.
For all of us.
Today has just been the day of problems with Microsoft Teams and everything else. Anyways, my, my problem. Mayor and members of the council, today before is actually a very positive thing. As you know, you did, you approved the COVID-19 continuity plan, which had many different elements, including several points on the economic development standpoint, which this is the last one on the checklist for the Community Development Department. You remember plan check extent or entitlement extensions, other things as well that we've gone through. This is actually the last and kudos to the Community Development Department for bringing this last one before you for your consideration. And I'll let Mr. Reimers, whose idea where this stemmed from, bring it forward to you for a few moments.
Yes, good evening, council. Thank you, City Manager. The deferral program that's before you tonight is based on the notion that are, under our existing program, renewals are required to be submitted by January 1st and then on February 1st, late fees are assessed. The proposal would be to defer that for three months so that the payments would be due by March 1st and late fees would start to be assessed on April 1st. If there are new licensees, they would not need to pay until March 1st as well. Under the amnesty program, right now, our current program says that if you're operating a business without a license, you're supposed to pay a 10% penalty. And that's assessed the 30th day of each month. Under the proposed program, someone could, who is operating the business presently without a license, would just pay the principal license fee, there would be no penalties incurred. That amnesty program would be available from December 1st till the end of February. And then they would need to, the fee would need to be submitted by March 1st. We will be working with community preservation staff and the state and our business license staff, who is also on the line, Sandra Scott. If, in case you have some technical questions, they will be working together to identify those unlicensed businesses. And then lastly, in the business license code, there is a current requirement that certain businesses, such as delivery businesses, require a business permit. Business permits do require that both the owner and all the drivers undergo a background check. And it's not just an initial background check, it's an annual background check. And the cost of that is $87. All of that cost is passed along to the sheriff's department, which does the background check. Because during the COVID-19 pandemic, we're seeing a lot more reliance on delivery services, the proposal before you tonight is to modify that code section so that these businesses only need to get a business license, they're no longer allowed, required to get a business permit. That will save them a cost and a hassle. And the businesses we're proposing to exempt from the business permit would be gardeners and house cleaners, private parcel delivery services like UPS, FedEx, taxi drivers and Uber and Lyft drivers, and food and water delivery businesses. So with that, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution and the ordinance that's before you tonight.
You're on mute, sir. We're, we're all doing it tonight. In the late, it's getting late. Okay, Councilmember Mann, any questions or staff?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Questions?
Councilmember Riscara?
Questions?
Mayor Protam Yu?
I have no questions, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just had one quick question came to my mind. So part of this is to help economically correct with some of these businesses as far as waiving the rights. How does FedEx fit into that whole equation? They seem to be making more money than God at this point. So anyway, I guess we can't single them out, but anyway, okay.
Exactly.
All right. All right, let's open up public comment. I'll start with asking our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter.
No, Mayor, there are no public comment emails.
Okay, and do we have anybody on the line?
No, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to close public comment. Any final questions or comments by council? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Please, sir, we are going to need two separate motions, one for the resolution and then a second one for the introduction or first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, and I think that's, that's in the recommendation, so if somebody wants to go ahead and make that motion, I appreciate it. But you know what? Let me do it. Since I never get to do motions anymore, I'll do it. How's that? Okay, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution number 20-5504, which permits the city to temporarily defer collection of business license fees and penalties due to the impacts of COVID-19 and to introduce for first reading by title only and waive further reading of ordinance number 20-151051, schedule the second reading of ordinance number 20-1051 for December 1st, 2020. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second without objection. Madam Clerk, we have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Riscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, if you would mind reading the title?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 20-1051, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple City amending section 5-28-0 of the Temple City Municipal Code pertaining to the reference to business by vehicle.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item number 11, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, members of the council. I'll be brief, but I would be remiss if I did not mention some of the significant issues that are happening and the actions of the LA County Health Department just today. Today, Dr. Ferrer issued a revised health order that will be effective on Friday that will provide some additional limitations to business activity throughout Los Angeles County. We will make sure to get that out on our social media feeds and then if anybody has any questions, we'll be able to answer those. That includes closures of, of businesses at 10 o'clock, including restaurants as well. In addition to that, there, there are steps that are now being taken because of the unfortunate increase in the infection rate throughout the county. That would include additional closures, going to take out no more outdoor dining. And finally, to what we were dealing with in March of this year, which would be essentially a type of curfew. We will try to get that information out to the community as soon as we can. I know the LA County Health Department has done a good job. I'm on, myself, Mr. Ozumi and others are on weekly phone calls with the LA County Health Department as well. But this is a significant decision by the LA County Health Department based on the facts that they are facing and the pace of where the epidemic is, the pandemic is at this point in time. So I'm sorry to deliver that news. It's amazing in, in the sense of we have great news on one end with the vaccine success and the spread of the community spread that we're seeing. Temple City is still not doing that badly in comparison to the entire county, but the virus knows no borders and we'll do all that we can to continue to help. That's it for me today, Mayor Chavez.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Number 12, update from city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Three things tonight. I'll try and be as brief as I can. First, there was a recent appellate decision in San Diego County dealing with the California Environmental Quality Act. As you know, we have record retention rules that require your emails and texts to be kept for a certain amount of time. Emails tend to be rolled off by our system after, after a given period of time. Under this case, which is called Golden Door Two, because it's the second time that the Golden Door development went up before the appellate court, court ruled that for sequoia purposes, emails, texts and other documents that would normally be subject to a records retention policy, they have to be kept throughout the sequoia statute of limitations period. So I'll be working with Mr. Reimers on this. Obviously, his department's the most affected by it, but I wanted you to just be aware of it because it, it will affect the way that the computer system continues to log your, your emails and other documents. Second, another court case came out of Los Angeles County. Some of you may have seen it in the LA Times this past week, involves the Housing Accountability Act and the City of Los Angeles. The big deal in this case, the court ruled on the Housing Accountability Act and its, its applicability to this project. But the bigger deal, the, the judge, and this is a trial court judge, and frankly, one that I have appeared in front of and that were Temple City challenged, we would have a one in three chance of appearing in front of. The judge used extremely, in my mind, critical language about the City of Los Angeles's Regional Planning Commission going beyond the law and into policymaking. What the Regional Planning Commission did, and, and again, this is in a housing project, they were substituting policy goals such as the need for affordable housing, a desire to avoid gentrification for their job under the law, which was to apply the city's code and relevant state law to the project. Nobody says that avoiding gentrification or getting affordable housing built are bad things, and the court noted that. But the court said that a planning commission's job is not to make policy. Court, in my mind, was about one step away from saying, if you want to make policy, run for office. And you five have noted tonight that your staff and your commission do need to follow the law. We do a good job in, in Temple City of that, and the five of you do a good job of setting policy. But very critical case, one that we'll be watching to see how this judge deals with other Housing Accountability Act cases that come in front of him. Final item, Senate Bill 970, which you may have heard, moved the general, or moved the primary election date in non-presidential years in the state of California back to June from March. Couple different reasons were given for that. One was that the, the census is taking quite a while and so it'd be tough to redistrict by March of 2022. But not only the 2022 election, but all what we call gubernatorial year, primary elections were moved back to June while the March date is kept for the presidential years. Now, you may remember that Senate Bill 415, a few years ago, forced us to change our elections from odd years to even years to consolidate with the state due to the general turnout for our local elections. Because of this, I would normally be worried that Senate Bill 970 is going to force us to change some of our elections to June and keep other ones in March. And you'll remember, we relied on the Attorney General for the proposition that Senate Bill 415 applied to us and required us to change our elections. Well, in the last couple of months, a appellate court said that the Attorney General was wrong. A case brought by Redondo Beach said that Senate Bill 415 does not apply to charter cities. Now, that does not undo the charter amendment, amendment BP or proposition BP that the voters adopted. Your election dates stay in place, but it does mean that we don't have to scramble to try and figure out what to do with this new Senate Bill 970. I spoke with the League of California Cities Attorneys and lobbyists last week, just trying to figure out where they are on this matter. Their primary issue right now is trying to help cities figure out what to do with March elections that have to move to June in 2022, since the seats that were filled in 2018 by their very nature will expire in March. There are some cities that would actually lose a quorum because they could have three seats expire in March and no ability to fill them until June. So the league is working on that. We're lucky that it doesn't directly affect us, but all of these election matters just go to show that when the state is making adjustments for state purposes, they often forget their impact on we here at the local level. So that's my report. If any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them tonight or by phone or email in the future. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports tonight? I don't think we had any meetings, so go ahead, Ben.
Councilmember Mann? Councilmember Mann and I, we met for the facilities and infrastructure standing committees, special meeting. Councilmember Mann, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, sure. So this past Friday, Mayor Protemu and I met with staff, parting the latest project updates for the Primrose Park. And so there are some more detailed design level items that we discussed at the standing committee level. We also, one of the key things that we went over was related to project schedule. When do we want to put that out to bid with the upcoming wet season? So we provided some direction on that. We also provided staff with some ideas about what are the key things to highlight with respect to some of the more concrete design that they're bringing to us. I think council will, I think it's very exciting to see this unfold. Looking forward to seeing council's reaction and feedback on some of those details that include the previously, conceptually, it was the canopy area over the playground, but now there's a bit more of a very interesting design, in my opinion, and we provide direction on how to kind of reconcile that with the theme of our city, which, you know, our city flower, and so on and so forth. Mayor Protem, do you want to add some effective?
Yeah. So we've given some directions, but so the next step is for the, for staff and the designer come back to the full city council to show you what the recommended design changes are, and also presumably, the construction document would also be ready, and, and for you to top the drawings and authorize the city manager to put this out for bidding. And I think, Mr. Cook, do you know when they might be coming back to the council for the full report?
First meeting in December, sir.
All right. So it's, but like the Councilmember Mann was saying, we have some very interesting design based on our city flowers, so I'm dying to see what that looked like. That's, that's all we have for reporting at this point.
Okay, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we will now move on to Item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. We'll start with Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Just two quick things. I just want to congratulate our Temple City Chamber of Commerce for hosting a successful annual gala, awards gala via Zoom. And if it hasn't already been, our very own city manager, Mr. Brian Cook, was one of the awardees, along with various other notable businesses, as well as local community organizations. Want to give a shout out to the dive for, it was a very interesting concept. They were obviously meeting through Zoom, and so we're not sitting down and eating dinner, but the chamber arranged for all the attendees who bought a ticket to be able to pick up a meal from the dive. So I thought that was an interesting way of doing things, and I like the creativity behind that. So I want to thank the president, the chamber president, Peter Choi, and Fung Mac for putting that together. And, and you know, we had Mayor Tom Chavez, you provided some remarks, and then we had some dignitaries like Congresswoman Judy Chu and Senator Susan Rubio. So, you know, it was well done. I just, I just want to, want to say that I'm happy that the chamber moved forward with doing that despite the COVID situation that we're all in, and I want to thank the board for working with and. Secondly, I want to give a big shout out to Parks and Rec Department for putting together our veterans, their tribute. I thought the, first of all, it was nice to fly over, even though we weren't together. I was able to step outside and, and see it, and I think I saw the circle around at least three times. So that was, that was pretty awesome. And the tribute video was well done, so I just want to thank our Parks and Rec Department for doing a fantastic job. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, have a safe Thanksgiving, considering the new health guidelines that are coming out.
That's all I have. Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, I just would like to thank council for their reappointment to the mosquito district. It has, this year, at least there's some positive news from, from the district, had the least amount of positive birds tested for the West Nile virus, and I believe LA County had one or two West Nile virus cases that led to death, but we did not have any in the San Gabel Valley, so that's really positive. And then I did want to share something regarding packages being taken. It seems to be that every day I hear either a neighbor or someone else that, if I'm at the market, who'll just say, oh, packages are being stolen. And one of my neighbors shared that, and I did not know about this, but if you purchase anything through Amazon, you can have it delivered to Rite Aid in Temple City, and it's called Rite Aid or Amazon Locker. And so you can order online, and then I guess at checkout, you can actually check it off to have your package delivered to Rite Aid, and then you have the code on your cell phone, and you go up to the, these lockers, and the cashier will bring you out your package. So it seems like a nice alternative to deliver your packages if you know you're not going to be home. So I just thought I'd share that with you and the public, and I hear it's very efficient. And one of the, the great things also is that if you go in and use, it's free, if you use Amazon Locker, the Rite Aid cashier punches in the number, and they give you a ton of coupons to use inside the store. So I think it's a partnership with Amazon, and there's about 200 Rite Aid stores, and the one in Temple City is doing it. So that's some good positive news also. And I can't recall, Tom, but did, did we close the meet, the last meeting in Josette Temple's honor?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And there are a ton of pictures that are circulating of her on the women's club and Facebook pages, and they've asked if any of you have any pictures of you with Josette Temple, if you can send them in to Dawn Tarrin. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
Well, the only thing I can think of right now is I discovered the, the new, the taco truck on Los Tunas across the street from City Hall, and it's great. Have you guys been there? Ah, recommend it. And they're, they're doing the land office business.
I actually hear there's a hamburger truck in Temple City also. Does anybody know where that one's at?
No. Do they have a permit?
Maybe they don't have a permit.
I don't know.
Ah.
Oh. Okay, well, you know, it was funny how, I know in Pasadena, they were, it seemed like tens and twenties of lunch trucks around all the time, but you don't see too many of them around anymore, for whatever reason, but there is one, you're right, there is one that parks in front of the school board building pretty much every night now.
Yeah, they're open till midnight.
Well, until, that, maybe not for now. The new rule, we'll see how that works out. Okay, thank you very much. Mayor Protemu, any final comments?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. We passed Item 10B without much discussion, so I just wanted to thank staff, thank Mr. Cook and Mr. Reimer for bringing items like that, that's business friendly during this COVID time, as we potentially go into more restrictions, so I just wanted to thank them for thinking out for businesses in the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mann, for the comments on the chamber event. It was a good event. A little longer than Peter's, I hope, but it was a pretty well, pretty well conducted event, and I have to mention that Councilmember Sternquist, after she alive by always winning a raffle, whether, whether it's virtual or in person, she wins the raffle.
I know, I feel I should donate it back to him because we want him to survive. He doesn't need to give me free food.
You know, Johnny has indicated that he is doing well.
Oh, good.
So that's good news.
Yes.
That he's doing well, and he's hanging in there. Talking about the dive.
Oh.
Yeah, so he's doing well. Okay, um, let's see, do I have anything? No, just, you know, come in, council, you know. You know, we had a very, what turned out to be sort of a difficult decision tonight, things that come before us. As a governing body, you know, we retain a lot of discretion, as Greg mentioned earlier, to make policy, to do things that we believe are in the best interest of the city and our community. I still want to point out that staff, our commissioners do a fantastic job, and they, their job is to follow the law and to follow the policy. And they do a magnificent job in doing that, and you know, every one, every now and then you get something that doesn't quite fit into that neat little square or circle, and that's for us to determine. But I want everyone, and especially our commissioners, to understand that it's not a reflection on the job that they're doing, but simply to point out that, or to recognize that they are doing their job, but you know, we have a little bit more discretionary power that they don't have, and that's why sometimes those decisions don't, are overturned, but it has nothing to do with, with their work, and, and, and I can't, I can't say enough how well they do their job, both our commissioners and our staff. So I want to thank everybody for that as well, and to keep up the great work. Right, so that's all I have. We will now move on to Item 15, additional public comments, items not listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any email requests to speak at this time?
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, and I'm sure at this late hour, we don't have anybody on the phone, do we?
No, sir.
Okay, I will then close public comments. And in our adjournment tonight, and thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Sternquist, we did honor Josette Temple, who we lost tragically a couple of weeks ago, but I think tonight would be a good, good way of maybe closing our meeting in honor of, again, of all our veterans and those who, who gave their lives to, to keep our country free and, and give us the opportunity to live as we do. And not only those who have lost their lives and the families who have suffered through the wars, but also, of course, you know, this terrible tragedy, this terrible pandemic that we've been going through, and the people that we've lost to COVID. I know, all of us know at least someone who has had tragedy in their family or friends, and it's just, it's been, it's been quite a year. It's hard to believe that it's November, and then we're still, we're still doing this. Who would have thought back in March that we would still be doing things the way we were doing? But, you know, unfortunately, it isn't going away, as our city manager indicated, but I'm happy to see that when you go around Temple City, that people are wearing their masks and doing their job and doing the best they can to social distance and, and doing what we have to do to, to really save lives. So I would like to close in their honor tonight, and with that, we are adjourned, and we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks, if not sooner. Stay safe and happy Thanksgiving to everyone, by the way.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you guys. Take care, have a good evening.